Order Cindy Roque, please.
Councilmember Coe? Councilmember Coe? Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready? Soroka?
Here.
Councilmember Coe? I see him, so I know he's here. I don't see Suresh, though.
Says he's muted. Uh, Coe says he's muted. Doesn't look like he is, but...
Well, he's got a couple of things happening. He's got, um... Councilmember Coe?
Here.
Thank you. I'm still looking for Suresh. Don't see him yet. Um, if you want to go ahead without him, I will track him down.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the COVID-19 statement then. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 19, 2020 proclamation, suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.8 or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing, the City of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted for the city's normal course of business. Moving on, uh, we would like to welcome everyone that is with us this evening. Um, Cindy, do we, do we have anyone who is a member of the public that has indicated whether or not they would like to, um, speak this evening?
Not as of yet. There are people, um, we have ten attendees, or actually nine attendees.
Okay.
But no one has, no one has asked to be able to speak yet this evening.
Great. We want to welcome everyone, and if you do want to speak on any item, we would encourage you to use the chat function. Let Cindy know that you would like to speak, and she will, uh, she will let, uh, she will unmute you. You can speak on any item that is on the agenda when we get to that agenda item. Um, if there, if you want to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council. Moving on to the next item, the agenda approval. Do we have a, uh, motion to approve the agenda?
Moved Evans.
Second Scott.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes, sorry.
And Councilmember Ready is joining us as we speak.
Okay. Well, why don't we, uh, the motion has passed. Why don't we move on since he wasn't here for the, um, for the motion and the discussion? We'll move on to, uh, Public Communications. We have one public communication this evening, uh, presentation from Greg Edwards, Catch Des Moines. Is Greg with us, Cindy?
Yes, he is.
Okay, can you let him in?
I have.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. Are you hearing me okay?
Certainly, you bet.
Right on. Can you see me?
No.
That's probably, that's probably a benefit. Oh, well, thank you all for having me. And Cindy, if you wouldn't mind, uh, starting my present, my PowerPoint presentation, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Great. Um, well, first and foremost, um, Happy Election Eve, and I know some of you are, um, in the run for some offices out there, so, uh, best wishes to all of you on this election eve. Thank you too for your continued support in Catch Des Moines and, and what we do and what we stand for. You probably imagine, and I know you've read all the statistics out there, that, uh, the tourism travel industry is probably one of the hardest-hit industries during this pandemic. Um, and I'll kind of review some of the, some of the positives and, uh, probably a little bit more negative than what we normally would like to be talking to you about tonight. But, um, prior to COVID-19, just some national stats. One in ten Americans worked in the travel industry across the country. 15.8 million jobs across the country. Here in our metro area, this industry employs a little bit over 20,000 jobs in our metro, um, of which about half of those are still unemployed at this point. Um, at the height of the pandemic, five hotels in the metro area closed down. Sorry for my phone in the background. It's probably somebody calling to ask me to vote for them. The, um, all those now, all those hotels have now reopened. Our budget in particular, we sustained a 54% cut from what our previous fiscal year budget was. So, um, large, large cuts within our organization. We, um, did a 25% cut in our staff. Uh, we cut salaries across the board at 5%. We cut out all incentive pay, um, a lot of our other programs and things, um, that we would normally do, so... Um, not, not a real happy ending, uh, to the fiscal year anyway, which ended June 30th. You should have received our year-end review, um, a year, uh, probably about a month and a half or so ago, which highlighted some of the highlights from the year. We actually ended the year pretty good, and I'll show you some stats on that overall as far as our bookings go, because so much of what we do is booking future events, sports conventions, meetings, et cetera. Johnston also, uh, we keep you in mind, um, obviously, um, with our leads and, uh, we can at least track that $4.4 million in economic impact was a result of our efforts, um, just to your hotels and in the Johnston community. You go to the next slide. 315 events have canceled or postponed since a pandemic hit us in, uh, in March, totaling an economic impact of, uh, over $284 million to the metro area. Um, these ranged, you saw a lot of them in the paper, ranged from large events like the Principal Charity Classic to the World Pork Expo, um, to the National Junior High School Rodeo Championships, on and on and on. The future is still a little bleak at this point, um, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a few minutes. We continually, um, um, talk to our constituents out there, holding monthly what we call our VIM meetings, which are Visitor Industry Meetings, which includes hotels, restaurants, other travel-related, um, industries throughout the metro. At our last meeting, um, we always bring in a couple guest speakers. We had Jeff Bruning, who's one of the principals with Full Court Press Restaurants. He indicates his restaurants are down 70%. Talked to Paul Rotenberg the other day, the CEO of Orchestrate Management. Their restaurants are down over 50%. Um, we also have Kevin Foley. We keep in touch with Kevin Foley all the time with the airport. He indicates that airport traffic is, um, about 40% of what it was a year ago. Obviously, not a lot of business travel going on, and that's what a huge, um, impact is to us too on hotel motel tax as well. You can go to the next slide. As I mentioned earlier, actually, last year was, um, our last fiscal year was our biggest booking year really in our history. Um, you can see that we booked 388, um, events last year, again, conventions, meetings, and sporting events. A lot of those have postponed or canceled, but a lot of those are far enough in the future that they are holding on, and I'll hit on some of those here in a little bit as well. Our goals this year, which was approved by our Board of Directors, we lowered them, obviously, greatly. Our goal this year is to hit 220 events, conventions, et cetera, for this fiscal year. So far, they were off to a, a slow start in, in obtaining that, um, thus for, thus far. Next slide, please. Just some COVID-19, um, updates. Uh, we've really strategically, um, rearranged a lot of what our efforts have been. Um, our primary focus immediately and continues to be really supporting our local businesses, our restaurants, our hotels, our show, our retail stores, et cetera. A lot of things that you see on this slide, and we continue to hold, um, monthly communications with our hotel sector. Um, we monitor and communicate event cancellations to everybody. We facilitate coordinate postponed events. Uh, we did a big promotion, continue to do, with our hashtag DSM Local Challenge that's in partnership with Greater Des Moines Partnership. Um, we came out with a hotel bond program early on, buy now, visit later, which was a very successful program. We had 35 hotels participate in that. Um, we have a, a great support local website hub, um, at catchdesmoines.com. We, uh, did pull off our Des Moines Restaurant Week, which was the end of August, which was a huge success this year. And, uh, we continue to do a lot of new videos, and we're doing a lot of those just in-house, really supporting and, and promoting our outdoor recreations, recreation opportunities throughout the metro. All the national stats that we're following are showing people still want to travel, but they want to stay closer to home, they want to travel with family, and they want to do outdoor events. So, that's been fairly effective for us. Next slide, please. This will really show you, um, kind of good news, bad news scenarios. Um, this is what is our STAR report, which is our, um, hotel occupancy average daily rate reports that we get on a weekly basis. And this will show you really from February, which was a high point. And obviously, February, January, February were very strong months. Because of Iowa caucus, a lot of that was due to that. Ran a real high occupancy, high average daily rate. You could see the big plunge, um, through March, and then really the biggest plunge through April. At that point, hotels were really running, um, that, this shows you they were running, um, just below 20%. A lot of the large hotels were running actually less than 10% occupancy at that time. We've seen some growth, some spurts, and if you actually, if you hit the next slide, please, Cindy. This shows you our weekly occupancies, and you can see a couple peaks there. One of those peaks is in July, when we were, um, able to host a Nike, uh, National Championship Basketball Tournament here in Des Moines. It was originally scheduled from McCormick Place in Chicago. Um, they, of course, closed them down, and we were able to snag that here. It was a three-week event, Wednesday through Sunday. Brought in about 1,000 people each of those time periods. Was all held at the Iowa Event Center. All COVID, uh, um, things were in place. They checked everybody's temperature. Everybody wore masks, except obviously the players. To our knowledge and according to the planners, um, you figure over 3,000 people were here over that period. Um, we only had, um, eight COVID cases that were reported back, so, pretty good odds on that. You see the other peak in August. Um, that was actually due to duration, which was pretty amazing. Uh, people either with shot, uh, power outages. I think we attracted people from other communities too, to come here that had outages for, you know, several days or even weeks and spent the night in hotels, and that gave us another little bump there as well. We still continue to see a, a fairly steady amount in, uh, occupancies. We dipped a little bit in, uh, you can see this past week of October. But I think we'll see another rise again, because this past weekend, we actually hosted a wrestling tournament, a USA Wrestling, um, Youth Tournament at Wells Fargo Arena. Brought in 3,000 wrestlers. As I've been saying, you know, nothing says COVID like wrestling, so... But, um, it did help boost the economy and, and helped a lot of small businesses out as well. Go ahead, next slide, please. Here's another chart that we've been sharing with our board, um, really showing again the average daily rate on the top. You can see the red line is what our actuals were last year. The blue line is what our budget was, is for this fiscal year. And then the green, yellow, yellow screen line is our actual. So, on the good news, we are running ahead of what we budgeted. We really budgeted very conservatively this year. So, we're a little bit ahead of the curve there, um, so that is some good news on that front. On the sales side of thing, things, um, this is what we call our TAP report, which is really a pace report that the hotels in particular use, um, to show us where we stand, especially in future years. You can see we're really ahead of pace, and, uh, for next year, we're right at pace for 2022. We're ahead in 2023. And we also compare ourselves to our competitive cities, competitive markets, same size. We compare to our Lexington, Providence, and Spokane. And then, um, cities that we really compete with heavily, which are larger markets, are Louisville, Milwaukee, and Omaha. And you can see on that chart, that really we're ahead of the curve there in most, um, circumstances too. So, we're proud of our booking pace and, uh, how we, uh, how we are standing for the future anyway. Next slide. Sales, you know, we, we've readjusted strategically our sales tactics. Um, we've also, we've, uh, really done a lot of stuff with our client base. We formed a National Planners Advisory Board about a year and a half ago, and this is made up of about 20 professional planners from associations, corporate meeting planners, sports meeting planners, all across the nation. We've now been doing quarterly meetings with them, um, keeping track of what their trends are, what are they doing in their future meetings, and all that sort of thing, so that's been very helpful. We've also done that on the state association side, where we've, uh, enlisted the help of about 15 of the larger state associations, doing the same things with them. Iowa Bankers, Iowa School Board Association, and some of the larger ones. They're all really telling us the same thing, no plans to, uh, do in-face meetings for at least through the first quarter of next year. But they're still optimistic, of course, as we all are, with a vaccine coming out and hopefully being planning, being able to plan more, um, in the future. Some of the upcoming events, you can see that at the bottom of the screen. These are still holding on. Um, the Iowa State Dance and Drill Team Competition in November. Um, a large ag show with harvesters in January. Iowa Pork Congress is still on board. The Iowa, um, Ag Expo is still on board. And then, uh, a lot of stuff still scheduled for the summer months. Ironman, Junior High School Rodeo, uh, big President's Cup Youth Soccer Tournament in town. And, uh, National Speech and Debate Tournament is also holding on for June and next year. 10,000 kids will embark on the metro area for that, uh, conference. On the marketing side, um, obviously done a re, a lot of realignment with that. Um, with budget cuts, we cut out a lot of the television advertising that we've done. But we're doing a ton in the digital market, the social media market, really getting, um, great impressions from all of our efforts with that. And we are seeing actually a higher occupancy rate on the weekends than we are during the weekdays, which is a sign that, again, people are taking leisure trips, and there's just a lack of business travel out there right now. So, bottom line, um, we still were able to generate over $47 million in economic impact to the metro last year. And, um, again, we continue to appreciate your support, and the city of Johnston is being a partner. I'll take any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions for Greg? Well, Greg, thanks for joining us this evening and getting, giving us an update on what's going on at Catch Des Moines. Uh, this certainly has been a challenging year, um, but it's clear that you haven't just been sitting, sitting in your corner wringing your hands. You know, you're out there and you're working hard and you're doing what you can do. Go hold on to what we, we can and, and plan for the future, so... Hopefully, uh, 2021 will, uh, will be a better year for us.
Hope so. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we are still under Public Communications. Is there any one in the audience that is with us this evening that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? If you would like to speak, uh, please indicate, uh, that in the chat room. Cindy, are we seeing anyone?
I see none.
Okay. We'll move on to public hearings then. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 20-270, adopting the Thrive 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:20.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. After a long, uh, 18-month process, uh, we are recommending tonight adoption of the Thrive 2040 Plan. Um, we've got Brad Shy with Hoysington Cogler Group, um, on the meeting as well, so, uh, he may chime in, um, as necessary as, as we go through this. Cindy, if you wouldn't mind opening the presentation document, I can, uh, talk from that.
Thank you very much.
If it opened, it's not, sure, there you go. Uh, so we, we kicked off the, the Thrive process back in March of 2019, um, with a goal of trying to, um, wrap up in about 12 to, 12 to 15 months was our target. Obviously, we weren't anticipating a COVID pandemic, um, during the process, and so that has slowed us down a little bit. But we did, uh, throughout the process, including post-pandemic, we went through a process where we had three different rounds of community engagement. Uh, the first round was what we called learning, sort of phase one. And that was really before we had done much work at all as, uh, on the comprehensive plan. We put together the report card, but otherwise, uh, we were out soliciting conversation with residents, businesses, um, and other groups, uh, just trying to get some feedback on, on what they were, uh, thinking were issues, uh, what they liked about Johnson, what their concerns were. And so that, that process went through all of the summer of 2019, and it really helped. We had all of the community picnics last summer, and so we were at all of those events, um, and some of the other traditional, um, events, uh, Sunday in the Park, for example. Uh, we were at all of those, um, solicited a tremendous amount of feedback through that process. Uh, that really helped us as we started out in sort of the second phase of, of evaluating sort of where we were in the plan and what, uh, direction we thought we needed to move in. And so, if, in the summer and into the fall, we worked on, uh, developing, um, our vision and guiding principles, our major policy directions, and also worked on the, the future land use map and the land use categories. And so that process, uh, rolled out, um, in February and March of 2020, um, where we were soliciting feedback, um, specific to those items. That was an online engagement, was planned to be online before the pandemic, um, where we had a mapping feature, a survey feature. Um, and again, um, we held, we also hosted a number of, uh, focus groups, uh, with various, uh, parties during that time, uh, to make sure we were moving, um, uh, in the right direction. Pandemic then hit, and, uh, we were slowed for some time, although, I think, uh, a number of staff spent an awful lot of time, uh, in their office, uh, at, at home, allowed me certainly a lot more time to review the document itself and, and fine-tune it, um, and make improvements to it. And so, um, in, um, July, we were able to roll out, um, sort of July through September timeframe, we rolled out the draft plan, uh, and solicited feedback, um, on the draft. Um, because we couldn't hold a traditional open house, we had to get creative, and so we did an open house by appointment and met with a number of folks, uh, who came in and, uh, just had questions or wanted to talk about the plan. Uh, we did a live virtual chat via Zoom, had about, uh, 20 residents who attended and were able to, uh, ask questions, and we just kind of gave a short presentation. Uh, and then we had our virtual open house, um, which was a website that featured a number of short videos, um, kind of by chapter in the plan. And, um, also allowed a survey function where they could provide comments directly, uh, through that process. So, in total, um, and attached to the doc, air to the agenda tonight is a, as a summary of community engagement. That's about a, a 90-page document that summarizes all that we heard through that, that course of that, that time. I really, um, really happy with the amount of engagement we were able to, um, get with the community and the comments received, um, and were able to incorporate that into the, into the plan. Cindy, if you want to scroll down there. So, a couple of things I wanted to highlight tonight, um, that is, is sort of changed or, um, adjusted from our previous comprehensive plan to the draft tonight. Um, one of the things that early, we did early on was we were looking at our residential, particular residential land use categories. And, uh, we've historically had a low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential, and sort of very firm densities at which the, you would transition from one to the other. We tried to relax that a little bit to allow a little bit of flexibility, and so, um, in doing so, we renamed them. So, what's been traditionally lower-density residential is now suburban residential, talks about two to four units per acre. Uh, we created a new category, suburban mixed residential, uh, which gets into the, um, three to seven units per acre, so getting still single-family, but could be some, um, by-attached type units, um, just a little bit smaller lots, um, just a little bit, um, a little bit denser, uh, of a suburban neighborhood. Then we get into the traditional medium-density residential, uh, which, um, goes from six to 10 units per acre, and Cindy, if you can scroll to the next page. Then we get into what we've traditionally had as high-density residential, of those densities being, uh, 10 units or, or greater, 10 units per acre or greater. We did do a little tweaking to our mixed-use, um, districts or neighborhood and our commer, community mixed-use. Specifically here, we added in notations, um, kind of breaking down the, the, the breakdown between residential and commercial uses within the mixed-use, making sure that we're, um, capturing the, the necessary commercial components to those areas. You can scroll to the next page, Cindy. Uh, and then we, uh, created, uh, we renamed, but we've traditionally had an office, um, land use category. Um, in, in this plan, we've, uh, relabeled that as business or, and/or employment, um, again, allowing just a little bit more flexibility in the types of zoning districts that would, would fall under, uh, under those categories. Uh, while we have this up here, we also, I would note, one of the changes we made based on public comment under the parks and open space designation, um, we have in the future land use map a number of greenways, drainage ways that are identified, um, as parks and open space. Um, that's a, um, really is a takeaway from our watershed plan that was done back in 2009, where we tried to make sure we were identifying areas that developers needed to be aware of as they were developing the properties. Um, however, the description that we had in the plan basically said they would be public parks and open spaces. Uh, and so we did clarify the language here, um, to, to clarify that, um, those greenway corridors, um, may or may not be, um, public, public parkland. Um, and it doesn't prevent those areas from being developed, it's just they need to be considered as part of, um, the development process. Cindy, if you want to scroll down. Uh, so that brings us to probably the most, uh, used page in the, in the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. So, those land uses that I just talked about are all, uh, called out throughout the course of this map. And I'm going to quickly move on to the next page, where, um, what we tried to do, we certainly looked at land uses across the entire community to make sure that they were still relevant or, and/or made sense, but we did focus in on some of our key areas and really looked at those a little bit more specifically and in a little bit more detail, um, and created a number of focus areas. And I'll, I'll just go through those real quickly, um, as you, if you want to scroll down here, Cindy. Uh, the first one and the big one was obviously our growth area, uh, to the northwest along, uh, Highway 141 and North of Saliville Drive. Uh, this is our future growth area. Um, a part of this area has been annexed, but, uh, most of it falls outside of our current corporate limits. You know, um, significant amount of acreage here, and so what we tried to look at was, uh, land uses that would, uh, blend and be complementary to some of the existing rural residential that's, um, in the area. We looked at, um, just trying to capture some commercial opportunities along Saliville Drive and 141. Uh, and then because of the amount of residential that would fall in this area, um, are showing sort of a neighborhood commercial node, um, surrounded by some higher-density residential, um, sort of right in the center there, and then that would transition out and blend out as, uh, into lower density as you... as you as you get away from that, just because the amount of of land here, there's going to be a need for some of that neighborhood commercial support there. You can scroll to the next one. This next area is the area west of Highway one forty one. And again, we've, part of this has been annexed into the city and and a part of this would be future, could be in the future annexed. A lot of resources here, natural resources, Beaver Creek runs through here. There's some wetlands and water resources, but there are some development, development pockets as well. And so those have been, those have been called out here. We also looked west, excuse me, east of Highway one forty one. This is the area of the Beaver Creek Golf Course and then extending up up to Saliville Drive. We did have a number of meetings with the camp about the possibility of trying to get some better local street transportation network through this area. And so this plan does envision a crossing of Beaver Creek. That would be following the hundred and tenth street alignment. And then if you could scroll down just a little bit, Cindy, it also shows that alignment traversing across the very southeast corner of the Camp Dodge property and getting back to Northwest one hundredth Street. One of the challenges we had when we were looking at this area is how do we tie that to sort of the current boundaries of Johnston? And how do we allow for some transportation circulation that doesn't require access to one forty one? As you can see here, the focus in this area has been largely for employment to take advantage of the transportation network along one forty one. We also took a look at some of the areas sort of in the core of Johnston where we'd had sort of questions or various development proposals looked at it over time. And so the top one there is looking at the intersection of Northwest eighty sixth Street, Northwest one hundredth Street. So suggesting some blending of densities there from some residential while maintaining some commercial. Those, both of those properties have been looked at a number of times by various folks and haven't fully developed yet. The bottom image there is the Northwest one hundredth and seventieth Avenue area where we again looked at trying to find a blend of mixes between some commercial and some medium density residential. We also looked at, this is the Windsor Office Park area. That office park has been in existence for about twenty years and has been slow to develop. The south half is still owned by the the Jennings family, who has, who owned the original entire eighty acres before the office park was developed. They expressed interest in some residential, higher density residential in this area. This plan does call out that possibility as well as some medium density residential that would allow some transitioning to the existing single family while still maintaining some office and commercial uses, particularly along the south side there of Windsor Parkway. This is one of the public comments we received. They have requested more identity residential in this area than what we're showing on the plan. And given that that request sort of came in after our draft plan was put out for public comment, we did suggest, and we've talked with the council previously, that that would be best handled if they brought that amendment request in, independent of the overall adoption of the plan. And I would suspect that they will be doing that here sometime in the near, in the near future. And then I think this is the final one. We did look at the area, what we're calling the Little Beaver Creek area, but generally the area west of eighty sixth Street, north of seventieth. Again, we've got some flood plain and natural resources to contend with here, but there are development pockets. And we tried to highlight that on this particular area. So that leads us down to implementation. And one of the challenges I laid out for Brad and the Hoysington Cogler team when we started this process was that I really wanted a clear path of how how and what needs to be done and and under sort of what timeframe we should be expecting to do that as part of our implementation plan. And so we developed this matrix that is broken down by chapter in the plan, where we not only identify the sort of key initiatives, but we look at timeframes in which those can be achieved, which party or which department was sort of be the responsible party, a party for achieving that. And then what what sort of the level of effort needed from a staff resources perspective as well as a financial resources perspective? So is it something we can do in house without a lot of cost? Or is it something that requires a consultant and a lot of staff time? And so the higher the number, the more, the more involved in each of these cases. So just a couple I'd like to highlight is, as you look down through the the various chapters, we are calling out the need for a zoning and subdivision code update where we could really look at a number of things that sort of came up through the through the comp plan process of, you know, needing to amend our ordinances related to landscaping, parking requirements, protecting natural resources and in preserving natural resources. We've got a lot of old PUDs that date back several decades that don't refer to chapters of our code that exist anymore. And so trying to clean up all of those sort of things that have happened over the last thirty to forty years that we've had zoning changes over time. We also highlight the need for what we're calling the Merle Hay Road Streetscape Corridor Study, but we're, this would really be looking at everything from the front of the facade of one building on one side of the street to the front of the facade of building on the other side of the street. And how can we, how can we enhance the corridor, whether that be landscaping, parking improvements, better pedestrian access and and sidewalk system, trail system, better crossings, you know, improvements to the medians and access management, those types of things. And so that's when we call out here is as being a, as a priority. From a transportation perspective, I already mentioned, one of the, one of the key takeaways here is exploring that potential north-south connection into the growth area through the National Guard and through Camp Dodge. It's scroll down Cindy to the next page. Economic development, I do want to highlight this. This is the first time in our comprehensive plan where we've had an economic development chapter and certainly having Adam on board and all the work that he's been doing over the last few years. We wanted to make sure we were capturing that in our in our comprehensive plan. One of the key takeaways here, this, you know, this sort of a lot of ongoing here were things that Adam's already doing. This does hit on, one of the key things that we kind of talked about from an economic development perspective is we've made a lot of investment in our outdoor recreation, particularly as you look along Beaver Creek from the water trails to Tara Park. We're now talking about the Ignite at the southern end of the community. We've got a lot of opportunity there to really draw people into our community to take advantage of our natural resources. And what we don't really do today is sort of market it, market that as a collective. And so implementation strategy number five, there really kind of gets to that point of how do we develop that plan and strategy and and really market that? From a housing perspective, we certainly heard a lot of comments about multifamily housing. And so we couldn't tackle every issue brought up by that with a comprehensive plan. And so this does suggest the need for items two and three here, really looking at a housing study. And as part of that, looking at our housing conditions and and sort of trends to see what's happening and make sure that we're not getting into situations where our housing stock is deteriorating, trying to make sure we're maintaining that housing stock and maintaining those values. You can scroll down to the next chapter number here of implementation initiatives under Parks and Recreation. The big one is number seven. Number one comment we heard throughout the plot process was the need for some type of aquatic facility in the community. Again, we couldn't achieve figuring out what that fully meant as part of the comprehensive plan process. But this calls out the need for studying that area further to figure out what those opportunities are. And as you read that into the text of the of the plan, we talk about the need to make, making sure we understand the ramifications of that, the staffing constraints, the financial costs and ongoing costs of that type of a facility. And then under utilities, kind of the big takeaway here is one we're already working on. And that's sort of the need to undertake this broadband or high speed internet visioning study and and figure out what implementation strategies come from that. So we did, and attached to your agenda is sort of a frequently asked questions document. Noted here, sort of the three kind of two big comments we heard at aquatic facilities demand and and the concerns about multifamily housing, already touched on sort of the greenway corridors cleanup that we did there. It was also a comment we heard from a couple of folks. So we tried to summarize that document and and in the frequently asked comments document. With that, I'm going to stop and take a breath and ask Brad if I overlooked anything that he wanted to highlight or thought we needed to highlight.
At this point, Dave, I think you touched on just about everything. The the couple of things I would reinforce is that we learned through this process, and this might be something that David and your staff have a pretty good handle on, but we really have a lot of really strong partnerships in Johnston. And that, that's the whole theme of outdoor recreation that came out. I think you've got a great opportunity to leverage some of those partnerships and really achieve a lot in that that avenue, in that strategy of creating an economic development chapter, which was another one of the big moves in the updated company, I think really helps establish that as a vision and provide some concrete implementation steps that you that you can advance. So a great deal of thanks goes to David and his staff. They did a lot of contributions to the ideas and helping vet through the pages of text and make sure we we picked up as many of the little edits as we could. So I don't really have much else to add. I can stand for questions.
And I would be happy at this time to answer any questions the council might have. I would note, the Planning and Zoning Commission last Monday and the Park Advisory Board last Tuesday, both unanimously recommended approval of the Thrive 2040 Plan.
Council, have any questions for David or for Brad? You did a great job, Dave. No questions.
I would just, this is Councilman Cope. I I did share a question with Dave earlier and kind of, and I appreciate his feedback on one of the focus areas, the Windsor Parkway, as we're starting to hear some 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 suggestions from potential developers that would modify the comp plan. Appreciate your feedback on that and kind of where we go from there on that. And road, roads, you know, that are shown, roadways that are shown on the comp plan and the process that goes from whether those actually get built out or not. And so I appreciate your feedback on that, so.
Any other comments or questions from the council for Dave or for Brad? If not, this is a public hearing. Do we have any members of the public that would like to share any comments with the council? If so, please, please indicate, indicate that you would like to do that by raising your hand in that, with the chat function. Cindy, do we have anyone?
I see no one.
Well, we will close the public hearing then at seven fifty two. And Dave, I just want to, Dave and Brad, I just want to weigh in as well. And thank you for all of your good work on this. You know, this is a, this is a challenging task even under normal circumstances. And during the COVID nineteen pandemic that we've gone through, it was even more challenging. So you've done a fabulous job. You've come up with a great, great plan here and and it will give us good guidance as we move into the future in the years to come. So thanks, thanks for your good work on this.
Great, thank you.
With that, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash two seventy?
I'm motion, Rash.
Second, Evans.
Second, Cope.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Let's remember Martin. Yes, ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the next item, which is another public hearing to consider resolution number twenty dash two seventy two, a resolution approving voluntary annexation of property to the city of Johnston, Iowa, which lies within the corporate boundaries of the city of Urbandale, Iowa. The subject property is located northeast of Beaver Creek and immediately west of fifty four thirty six Merle Hay Road. And we'll open this public hearing at seven fifty three.
This is Clayton here, and Cindy, actually, if I could have you open the Urbendale-Johnston Boundary Adjustment Map up, up. Can you write? There.
That was the one I had open, Clayton. This one?
No, that's the zoning map.
This one?
Yes, please. All right. I'll just talk off of this map here this evening. So the city of Johnston is requesting annexation into the city of Johnston. This is land that we have purchased from the city of Urbendale, previously Urbendale Parkland to be developed as city of Johnston Parkland in conjunction with the private partner, private-public partnership with the Ignite Sports Facility, just that's proposed west of Sonic, Western Merle Hay Road. Property is currently just open space, prairie area, does include public trail, which is currently maintained by the city of Johnston. So very minimal impact to to our departments there of with, as a result of this annexation. No immediate plans to change the the use of the property, though we will likely see redevelopment plans here in the very near future in conjunction with that Ignite Sports complex. With, when the redevelopment does occur, there may be additional impacts to city fiscal impact, staffing needs. But those would really be a result of that redevelopment, not the annexation itself. This is subject to approval of the severance from city of Urbendale, and they have approved that, which paves the way for us to annex the property into the city of Johnston. It would be proposed to be established with the Conservation District's zoning district as well as floodway and floodway fringe overlay zoning districts in line with the FEMA flood maps for the area. It has been reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have recommended approval of this boundary adjustment between Urbendale and Johnston. Be happy to go into further detail if needed or answer any questions if you have any. I have not received any public comments to date.
So council, I would have questions for Clayton. If not, this is a public meeting or a public hearing on this item. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council? Cindy, do we have anybody indicating by raising their hand in the chat room?
No, we don't.
Okay. If there are no questions or comments, we will close this public hearing at seven fifty seven. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash two seventy two?
So moved, Martin.
A second, Rash.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Evans.
Move approval, second, Cope.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item eight A, consider approval of second reading of ordinance number ten thirty three and ordinance amending chapter one sixty seven of the Johnson zoning ordinance regarding minimum, minimum lot size for the AR zoning district, PZ case twenty dash fourteen. Regarding minimum, minimum lot size for the AR zoning district, PZ case twenty dash fourteen.
This is Clayton. No additional comments have been received on this matter and no changes proposed to the ordinance.
Very good. With that, do we have a motion to approve? Ordinance number ten thirty-three. Second to approve second reading of ordinance ten thirty-three.
Move approval cope.
A second fresh.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote, please.
Let's remember Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, mayor, I'd like, I'd like to to move that we waive third reading of ordinance ten thirty-three and adopt and publish unless there's staff objection.
Does staff have have any concerns?
No public comments have been received to date on this matter. Waiving third reading seems like it would be appropriate.
Well, we have a motion to waive the third reading and to adopt and publish. Do we have a second? We have a second Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Soroka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight B, consider third and final reading of ordinance number ten thirty-two amending ordinances. Numbers five thirty-one, five ninety-eight, seven seventy-eight, eight eighty-five and ten twenty-two. And providing that general property taxes shall no longer be divided on certain property located within the amended Northwest sixty-second Avenue urban renewal area. In the city of Johnson County of Pope, state of Iowa, removing amendment number one area and amendment number two area. From the division of taxes only and to adopt and publish. This is third and final reading.
No comments have been received on this and no changes are proposed.
Okay, council, have any questions for Adam? If not, do we have a motion to approve third and final reading of ordinance number ten thirty-two and to adopt and publish?
So moved Evans.
A second three.
Second cope.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight C, consider second reading of ordinance number ten thirty-four amending ordinance number seven ninety-one. Providing that general property taxes lobbying collected each year on all taxable property located within Northwest one hundred street economic development area in the city of Johnson County Pope, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Johnson County Pope, Johnson Community School District and other taxing districts. Be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city. In connection with the Northwest one hundred street economic development area amendment number one to the Northwest one hundred street economic development area. Adam?
Also no comments received on this ordinance and no changes proposed.
Any questions for Adam council?
Adam, would a waiving of the third reading be appropriate in this situation?
Actually, there's the easement issue that was referenced previously on the site plan for Northwest eighty-eighth street. It's kind of continued to be a problem and it's unclear at this point of whether the project's going to move forward, which is the primary purpose for this ordinance. So I wouldn't mind actually waiting for this third reading, just in case we want to pull it back if that project doesn't move forward. Because there's really no other reason to implement this ordinance if that project does not.
I was just trying to save the mayor from reading all that stuff again one more time, but you make it, you make a strong argument, Adam. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, a second reading of ordinance ten thirty-four.
A second.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight D, consider resolution number twenty dash two sixty-two approving approving the site plans for the Windwood condominiums clubhouse at sixty thirty-one Metal Crest Drive.
Okay, that would be me. This is Aaron. Okay. Windwood condominiums intends demolish and rebuild their clubhouse and pool area that's at sixty thirty-one Metal Crest Drive. And when we look at the vicinity map here, obviously it's on the south side of Northwest sixty-second street opposite the old high school. And as you can see, Metal Crest Drive is the north south street that is connected to Northwest sixty-second street to the north. And Metal Crest Drive to the south. Excuse me, Windwood Drive to the south. I've got the map mislabeled there. At any rate, the. Road is a private drive that serves the complex. And in order to meet setback requirements, like I said, they had they intended demolish this existing building and put a new building in its place. In order to meet the new setback requirements on this property, the building would have to shift slightly to the east. Which would require some minor changes to the alignment of Metal Crest Crest Drive. Again, that would be at the Atkins expense because that's a private roadway. Cindy, if you could, would you open up the site plan?
Which one, Adam?
I believe that one right there. I'm going to wait a moment for that attachment to open. If you could page down to. Maybe the fourth sheet. And this shows the the new building that they're proposing at six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Again, they do have an existing pool that'll be demolished as well. They plan to construct a new pool and pool area as part of these improvements. There's existing water and sewer mains that are internal to the site and those will be tapped for services. The building will be sprinkled for fire protection. And this proposal does result in a net increase of impervious area. I think the next sheet Cindy could page down shows here in the southeast corner of the site, they will construct a basin. Rectangular basin in that southeast corner that will meet the stormwater quality volume and allowable runoff requirements for the additional stormwater that's generated from the site. Cindy, if you page down a little further, there's some renderings of what the building will look like and they're in color that 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 works perfect right there. With regard to architecture, our code of ordinances addresses requirements for commercial and industrial uses as well as multifamily residential uses. However, none of these use categories really seem to apply in this situation. Rather, the clubhouse really serves as an accessory function to the multifamily use of the site. And so the the most appropriate code language I could find and and one that we've used in similar situations in the past. Is a that which is in our code provided for accessory structures. And it stipulates that accessory buildings must be constructed of common residential exterior materials. With buildings over seven hundred and twenty square feet being constructed with the same or comparable building materials as the primary residential dwelling. Well, the existing condominium buildings are clad with horizontal lap siding. And as you can see with this rendering, the clubhouse will also exhibit horizontal lap sighting. They're also using brick and stone in addition to horizontal lap. And all of these materials really are residential building materials and they're compatible with residential development. And in my opinion, this meets the requirements of the code. With regard to open space, thirty percent of the total lot area is required to be open space and the site plan is in compliance with forty-four percent. And based on that required open space, twenty-nine trees and seventy-nine shrubs are required on site. And the site plans are in compliance. There is a landscaping sheet. It might be the next one down. Maybe one more. Yep, there we go. But it does does meet the landscaper requirements of city code. This went to our planning commission last Monday and they did recommend approval. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those now. Otherwise, we have, I think, joining joining with us here tonight, Jeremy Shepard with R and R Realty. Who can, he's the representing the applicant. He can answer any questions you might have of him as well.
Does the council have any questions for Aaron or for Jeremy?
I'll just make a comment that I like the landscape plan. I like the diversity of plants. I like the plant selection. And thank you for that.
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment Jeremy and R and R on this nice addition to the to the Windwood project and to the community. It's a nice investment and looks really nice.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate your comments and we're definitely looking forward to to this project. In fact, we're hoping to get started here this month. So just appreciate your consideration and happy answer and any other questions?
Any other questions, council, or any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash two sixty-two?
Move approval cope.
Second Martin.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Motion passed. Item eight E, consider approval of claims in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eight five dollars and twenty-two cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved cope.
A second.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. We do have two items from the work session that we do need to take up. But we also have two items here. Jim, do you have a preference in the order that we take them up? Jim?
Excuse me. Yes, let's take them the order on the agenda so we can start out with the public works project update.
Okay.
So. Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to with the weather that we've all experienced here lately and the coming of the towards the end of construction season. I felt that appropriate to provide council and mayor with an update on our projects. Cindy, if we could probably take these backwards, we're going to go with Eastern Merle Hay Phase Four first. Thank you. So currently on the screen, what was in red was constructed in twenty nineteen and the blue, the light blue or the cyan was constructed this year in twenty twenty, which was the eastern portion of Northwest sixtieth and then sixty-first place. Happy to report that the road construction is complete and open to the residents and the public. Contractor still has some import of compost amended topsoil to place in these two areas. And then they will work on installing the underground storage units and retaining walls for the bio retention basins on sixtieth. And then they've still got a couple of concrete box outs around those intake structures to complete, but. It's been a long time coming, but if you can believe it or not, this will wrap up the Eastern Merle Hay South of sixty-second improvement project. So look forward to completing that set of projects over here. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions from Matt on that?
If not, we'll move into the Northwest fifty-fourth. Project. Out on Northwest fifty-fourth Avenue. Phase one, you can see there in the blue was. Constructed in year twenty twenty. Currently, we have both the east and west four lane segments completed. Those were completed in just the last two weeks. The contractor is completing the tie-in at the east end of the project back to the existing pavement. Tomorrow, and then they are scheduled to install turn lanes. Ninety-six, ninety-third street later this week. This project was completed. The project was scheduled to complete pavement just to the east of North ninety-third. So right there, just at the end of the blue. But we actually went just to that next, got a little bit more pavement in this year, just to that cul-de-sac there where the cursor is on the screen. So a little bit of head schedule on on this project. So that's good to report. And then contractor did remove trees along the segment to be constructed next year in twenty twenty-one. In preparation to begin work on that phase in the spring of twenty twenty-one. So we kind of got a little bit more than we planned to on this this project and ready to to swing. We'll be getting it buttoned up and hopefully opened up here shortly. Moving into sixty-second and Merle Hay. So on the map is stage one, which is essentially the western half of Merle Hay and the western portion of sixty-second there. Stage one was completed on the west side of Merle Hay. The segment was behind schedule due to a couple of construction issues by a subcontractor, which caused a three-week delay. With that, the contractor was notified that they would be incurring liquidated damages for missing that substantial completion date in stage one. Cindy, if you could scroll on to the next page. So this is stage two B. Currently, the contractor is working, I'm sorry, two A. Currently, the contractor is working in stage two A as well as a portion of two B. On this map, when we get to the next one, the additional northbound lanes and the on-street parking up in front of the old city hall and new city hall area. Was actually slated for two B, but we went ahead and tacked those on to two A. Currently in this area, the water main and sanitary sewer is completed and the storm sewer is nearing completion, probably in the next week, week and a half. Which then just leaves prepping for grade and placement of pavement and the on-street parking along sixty-second there east of Merle Hay. They'll be placing rock on those northbound lanes and paving those probably starting early next week. With that, there is installation of traffic of the traffic signal and signage to be done. After discussion at our last progress meeting on Friday, contractor did provide us with a schedule. Showing that they will be complete with stage two A in early to mid-December. Cindy, if you can scroll to to B. Thank you. So with that, unfortunately, the current schedule would move construction of stage two B into early twenty twenty-one. Stage two B is approximately six hundred foot long, which consists of just construction of some storm sewer and then the paving. Engineer estimated that construction to take for two B to last approximately six to eight weeks in the spring. However, once two A was done, we would reopen sixty-second Avenue over the winter. We did experience some impacts to our schedule. One was the three-week delay caused by the contractors work on the west side. Coupled with the deratio where we lost mid-American workers for about two, two and a half weeks. Which then impacted the installation of the storm sewer in stage two A. They've got a couple of seven hundred and fifty KVA lines running on that north side there. That had to get de-energized so that we can lay storm sewer. And then the last one was with the in the last couple of weeks with the early snow and the cold weather, we were delayed for just a little bit over a week. Staff will be looking into liquidated damages for stage two B. However, these may be very difficult with the circumstances that we've encountered recently. So be happy to answer any questions. As you can see on the map, the highlighted or light blue shaded area there going north. Is currently what they've got working on in stage two A as well. So you have to answer any questions.
So Matt, did I hear you correctly to say that sixty-second Avenue would be open or estimating sometime middle of December?
Correct. Yeah, early, early, their their original completion date was December fourth. They're still looking at trying to hit that December fourth date. But with the weather we encountered last last couple of weeks, the the most recent one we received, I believe, was December twelfth or December fourteenth timeframe.
Any other questions for Matt?
Great job, Matt.
And Matt, Matt, going back to fifty-fourth. So when, when not the the connection from ninety-third to fifty-fourth Avenue, that will be open at what point?
We don't have a. We don't have a definite opening point, but it'll be open either probably later this month. Try to hopefully.
Okay, so yes.
Yeah.
Right, cool. Excellent. Thank you.
Other questions from Matt? Hearing none. Thanks, Matt, for the updates.
Thank you.
Item nine C. Discuss use of stone wood architectural panels as an acceptable primary exterior material as described in chapter one sixty-six point thirty-five point two C of the City Johnson Code of Ordinances.
Hey, this is Aaron Wolf, Community Development again, and that attachment might take a little time to open up. But when the planning staff brings a commercial site plan to you for approval, you often hear us talking about when we when we get to the architecture portion, we talk about acceptable exterior materials for commercial buildings, and our code of ordinances stipulates that seventy-five percent of the wall surface for a commercial structure consist of architectural concrete panels, textured concrete block, or architectural steel or stone panels, and that's for each building elevation. And the council has also approved the use of fiber cement siding and smart side products in the past. Although those two products aren't specifically listed in the ordinance, we've reviewed them separately and and the council's made a determination that they exhibit the same durability that the other products on the acceptable list do. Hy-Vee has come to us. They would like our council to add an additional building material to that list of acceptable materials, and it's called stone wood architectural panels. And stone wood is manufactured. I'm going to read this. It's going to sound very technical. It's a it's manufactured with a core of phenolic resin impregnated craft paper and a face of melamine resin impregnated decorative pattern compressed at high pressure and temperature. And it says the surface pattern is unlimited in color and texture. It has a UV blocking layer that protects against fading. And it's designed to withstand all weather conditions, and it's purported to be impervious to moisture, graffiti, and bacteria. And of course, it's highly fire resistant. What all that means, I've got a sample of the material on my desk, of course, on a Zoom meeting. Can't really pass that around. If we were in the new council chambers, I'd send it up to the dais and you could all take a look at it. It's a very dense plastic. And as I stated earlier, it can be manufactured in any color, any surface texture, and and it's resistant to fading. The architect has submitted a portfolio of different projects where this product has been used. And that was included as a as an attachment to my staff report. If if you go down a little further, Cindy, you'll see some examples where it's been used on commercial buildings. And I couldn't tell you where these are located. I believe they're just various places throughout the United States. It's just the portfolio that the stone wood manufacturer has put together, but again, it's kind of hard when we can't see the material up material up close and in person, but if you took some time to review some of these graphics, it really does. It's it's an attractive product. And I can say just from from having it on my desk, it appears to be very durable. But I'll let the council ask any questions of of the architect if they're with us tonight. I don't know that I saw their name on the list of attendees. Cindy, do you know if we have anybody who wants to speak on behalf of this request?
It does not look like it, Aaron.
Okay. I don't know if anybody in the on the council has had any experience with this product or has seen it up close in person. And certainly I can make the product available if you want to stop at City Hall and take a look at it.
Aaron, this is Councilman.
Go ahead.
This is this is Councilman Coe. So can you explain exactly what what they're wanting to use this for? Is this for like a? How are they planning to use it?
Sure. Cindy, can you open up the other attachment that was yeah, the one on the right? There you go. You might have noticed in some of the Hy-Vee parking lots, there's shipping containers. I know I I live closer to the Hy-Vee on Northwest Eighty-sixth Street. That's where I do my shopping, and they have a shipping container in the middle of the parking lot. With the onset of COVID, more and more people are ordering groceries online and choosing to rather than go in the store and picking them up at Hy-Vee. And Hy-Vee is is in response to this demand, they've installed these shipping containers in their parking lot, and that's where they store these orders, and you can stop there and pick them up. And so various different cities throughout the metro have said, hey, this is fine temporarily because of COVID. You don't necessarily have to comply with with our architectural requirements or maybe some of the other building requirements, but as Hy-Vee is looking to use these over a longer over a longer term, perhaps in perpetuity, the cities are asking them to kind of dress these up a little bit and and make sure they're not intrusive to the site design. And so if you go down maybe a little bit more, Cindy, what I'm looking for, I don't know where it's at in the stack, is they did provide an aerial that shows where they intend to place these on their site. Here we go. North of the building, these would be two shipping containers side by side. Again, to store the various orders of their customers and and queue them up for pickup. And what they're going to do, and again, maybe if you page down a little again, Cindy, they're going to clad those shipping containers with this stone wood product, but also thin brick. And they're, you know, make it dress them up a little bit and and it won't just be a shipping container in the middle of the parking lot there. So that's what they're asking. They would like to use it on the exterior of the shipping container. And it's a material again that that we haven't seen used here in Johnston. And so I'm asking what the council's willingness is to accept this as a as a building material.
Well, great. That that's helpful then now because I've certainly I've seen those shipping containers in the Urbandale location and 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 to me, you know, that that's not a particularly you know, great perspective. So this certainly seems to be to be an improvement over that. And, you know, I mean, from my perspective, this product appears certainly to be consistent with what we're trying to achieve with our current rules and regulations. And so I would be receptive to allowing it, you know, unless people other people have, you know, a strong reason to oppose it.
And this might be a good instance to try it in this in this case on almost like a case-by-case basis. I mean, use it here and then we can determine if this is something that we want to approve and in other on other occasions for other structures. This might be a good test of the product.
And that was my question was is is this just? Are we are we changing the whole? What we require? We're just going to look at just this spot for now?
Well, you know, with regard to some of the other products that we've accepted in the past, fiber cement, we readily accept that for commercial structures, and that's basically just just based off of precedent. We haven't actually changed the ordinance to to mention fiber cement specifically in our ordinance. The same with Smart Side. It was Jerry's Homes, maybe a year and a half ago or so. They were building a commercial building on the south side of Northwest Sixty-second Avenue. And they wanted to use Smart Side products, and they came in with a manufacturer spec sheet and some illustrations of where the product's been used in other locations. And the council determined at that time that yes, this this does meet the intent of our ordinance. And again, we didn't change the ordinance, the wording of the ordinance, but basically because they showed us that it is an acceptable material, just we've we've accepted it based on precedent. And so that's I guess that's kind of where I'm going with this. Of course, David earlier talked about a rewrite of our zoning ordinance. At that time, we would be doing, you know, a wholesale rewrite of our architectural requirements, and that would probably be the appropriate time to incorporate some of these products in. But at this point in time, I guess I would just be asking you to, what is your willingness to accept it on this structure? And certainly, if if you could, you could do so as a one-time situation, and it might serve as a testing ground to decide if it's something you would be willing to consider adding to the ordinance for for use in the future.
Thank you. I support that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to to sort of do it as a trial run and then and 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 not necessarily change the ordinance at this point. And if we decide to change the ordinance later, we can we can do that.
And if another applicant comes forward and they want to use the same product, at that point in time, you would have had some experience with it. You could see it in person and see how it's performing and what the appearance looks like. And that might be grounds for approving it on additional structures.
Does any council members have any concerns about what's being proposed?
No, I don't.
Then, Aaron, I think you have what you need.
Thank you.
You bet. Jim, shall we go back and pick up the other two items from the work session?
Yes, we can start.
With the budget guidelines? For twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
Yes, start out with the budget guidelines for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Is that you? Or is that Teresa? Jim, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi. Do you want me to talk to him or are you going to talk?
I thought you were going to.
Um. Well, the Finance HR Committee met here a couple of weeks ago, and we went over the parameters for the budget for this coming year and the next year. Each year, we have a set of guidelines or rules we like to go over. And so this memo is just kind of outlining what those guidelines are for the year. And I don't know, Jim, I guess I wasn't planning on going through the memo point by point. You weren't expecting that, were you?
No, no, I I mean, obviously, the council had it to review prior to the meeting. So as as Teresa said, we start out by talk just some general comments on some of the issues and and information that we have today related to our FY twenty-two budget and the preparation of that. So if you look at the first page and second page, again, it's just a listing of things that we know today that certainly could change before we really get into the budget discussion, but there will also be some updating of some of this information, and there'll be other information that will be included in that this as well. We also on page three, talk about what our property tax levy has been over the last ten years, so you can get an idea of where we have been and where we currently are in in twenty twenty-one. Again, we haven't talked about what the, you know, the tax rate would be for twenty twenty-two yet. Staff hasn't presented their budget proposals, nor have we received the the actual evaluation information. In this document as well, beginning on page four, we just talk about what projects are included in the capital improvements program. The council's already seen these items as we've taken on bits and pieces of the capital improvement program over the last several meetings. And so this is just a listing of those projects that have already been considered, and I think the council will take action on the capital improvement program in early December. And then just some additional information regarding property tax backfill rollback commercial property, the different rollbacks we have pages four and five. And then we we also typically include this memo, the where we are with the community survey and the communities of the councils strategic planning. The survey is is going out as as we speak and and the survey, excuse me, in the planning session, we've already done the first session, and we have the second session planned for November twelfth, so we will add that information to this memo or or the summary of it to the budget memos when that information is available. So at the bottom of page five, we just list just the budget process that we will plan to go through as our department heads begin working on the budget. Couple, three factors we list that are significant to the budget is we we have a fairly small increase of assessed value in twenty twenty, since this is not a reassessment year. We're just counting on the value of from the growth and within our community over the last year. We also talked about, you know, we are going to be impacted due to COVID. Our our last revenue that we anticipated right now, we're being told that there may be maybe twenty-three percent lower than than what we expected. And on the road use tax side, we're we're been advised to budget at ten percent lower than what we hadn't passed on the road use tax because of less travel due to COVID nineteen and and so less gas sales and less gas. So, yes, some taxes available. So and those factors, there will be more of them as we go through, but this is what we do have some numbers to to put in right now. So you'll see, you know, we we ask our department head to begin working on their budget. Basically, if if they have any items that they want to have considered for additional funding for FY twenty-two, that they would need to request that through a decision package, or we do have some items listed that you know, we we know bargaining unit wages are going to go up as well as, you know, there'll be adjustments, insurance premiums and IPRs and utility costs and those types of things. So, you know, those those are pretty much built into the budget, but any additional expenses department heads will will share that with the city council, justify it in their budget proposals, and some of them will be presented in in a decision package for the city council to consider later on in the budgeting process. Just one other item, the and we do have a special council meeting planned for December fifteenth, which is our typical time when department heads will present their budget proposal to the city council. So we'll make sure that information and and date gets on everybody's calendar. And then just just follow us through with the other dates that we know right now in the budgeting process. So I know this is a quick go over of of this document, but we wanted to share it with the council, see if there's any significant concerns that you'd have right now. Again, this is very preliminary, but at least it gives you an idea of where we are as of November second twenty twenty, what we know and what we can expect in preparing our next year's budget. One thing I I guess I should have mentioned, we are planning, last year was the first year, we did a a two-year budget. We did a an actual budget for twenty twenty-one and then a draft budget for twenty twenty-two. This year, we 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 can start with the basis of that draft budget we created last year, make the adjustments that we need to, but we're also going to look at twenty twenty-three as well. I think it's good for us to to think through and a little bit longer term thinking about, you know, what our expenditures are and what some of the trends are as far as some of those expenditures. So we'll be doing that again this year.
One of the thing, one of the things the committee asked for was attached as a separate attachment. On page one of the memo, we always give you a history of the building permits issued and such, and we did, they did ask for kind of a map that shows, and this map indicates where I think the the key at the top showed where the the red stars are are new residential constructions. And then if there were any townhomes, it's kind of a blue X on the map. And then multifamily is that, like purple circle. And I think the committee was just sort of wondering, you know, out of curiosity, just where did it look like we those all were done? And so I think, Councilman Coe, I think that's what you asked for. If if I missed the mark on that, let me know.
That's that's very helpful. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So as Jim said, department heads are have to turn in their budgets to me here in a couple here in a couple of weeks. And, and then you should, I should get information back out to you by the first part of December. Let me know if you'd like a hard copy versus just electronically. Otherwise I'll be preparing everything electronically as well. Or for sure. I should have said the other way around. Any questions?
There are none. Are we ready to move on to the other agenda item from the work session?
The other item we have is a presentation on the policy for city staff to work special events. And the council's seen this before. Certainly the HR Finance Committee has taken a look at this several times. And our, our department heads and staff have been working on this as well. But what this is, is we, we started a couple of years ago taking a look at all the events that our staff is, is involved with, all the special events. And that would include everything from Green Days to Kites on the Green to the Chamber, Green Days events and, and the fishing derby we do, the mayor's bike rides, all these different events that, that some of them are city-related and some of them are events that we help with because, might be because alcohol is served or it's, it's a big event. For example, we, we provide staff at football games, school football games and those kinds of things. But most of these relationships we built over the years have been sort of evolved. And what we found, we were at a point a couple of years ago where each of these events were, in, in some ways handled very differently. In some cases, the then organizers paid our staff directly either through their payroll or sometimes they would just write a check to our staff that would work these events. Other times they were paid through our payroll. And what we wanted to do as staff is to make, make it more consistent on how we pay employees that are required to work these events. And so that's what this policy is all about, identifying the types of special events that we're involved with and trying to get some consistency. We want to make sure that our employees are number one paid for the hours that they work, but also covered with workers' comp and insurance when they, excuse me, when they work those events. So we wanted to make sure that we had that covered as well. So this, this policy, just it, first of all, it details the different types of events that we have that we're asked to provide services to. It also goes into what policy the city wants to apply. For example, our regular policy, if our employees get called in on call, they have to pay for a minute, be paid a minimum of two hours. Same thing here is that, that, that when somebody requires our employees to come in on their off time, we expect for them to be paid for at least that two-hour timeframe. And so, so that, and that is charged to the organizer of the event. And so you can see some of the different policies, as I mentioned earlier, and make sure the work, workers' comp and insurance is covered as well. Also with the number of events, the number of facilities that we have where we can have events now is we're, we're, we're to the point where sometimes we will need to hire a, a private firm to assist in some of these activities. So this provides guidance to the staff as well. Guidance to the staff as well as far as, you know, we may need to have the organ, organize, excuse me, organizers of the events use a private firm to, to provide these services. And of course, they would be billed directly from those firms. But this also gives the city the opportunity to review and make sure that the, the private firms have the staff and training to, to handle these events as well. So we also, from the last time you looked at this, we added some litigation language related to if, if we have litigation related to this policy. So this is really just a guideline for staff for working special events. We tried to think of all the different scenarios that, that we are involved with and trying to make sure that they would provide the service yet. Make, make sure that our employees are covered and that we're treating the organizations fairly and consistently as we provide these services. Any questions or comments on the policy?
So Jim, is this something that we would need to adopt or is this just a policy that goes into place and, and would be used by staff when, when these events occur?
Well, I, I think given the fact that this would be related to charging for different types of events, it's probably a good idea for the council to approve this. I just wanted to bring it just for, to see if there's any other thoughts that the council would have before we finalize. I, what I would plan to do is just put it on a, an upcoming consent agenda item at a, at a city council meeting. And, and this will be the guidance that our staff will have going forward in, in managing special events.
Does the council have any questions or concerns about what's being proposed here? We have seen it a couple of times before, but is there, is there any, any comments or questions?
I've got a quick question. There was a, that section in there about political events. You kind of scrolled through it a little bit. So yeah, number five there. A political campaign or similar event that requires the presence of law enforcement will be charged applicable hourly fees. So for instance, when we, let's say, like for instance, this year, this PBS, Iowa Public Television is having a debate between the candidates and you've got both, both sides are kind of out with their signs and all that different stuff. Did we, did we have to have any police presence for that this year? And, and how did that, how did, if so, did we, did we charge anybody for that? Or how did that work?
Well, in, in this case, we, we did provide services for those events. And so we have the items with, you know, when there's, for example, a political campaign's going to come and do a big rally and, you know, we, you know, they're, they need to have some kind of assistance in, in doing that, making sure traffic control is impacted and all that. That is where we would actually charge for, or at least bill for services. A lot of times we may not get paid for it. But if you look up on page two, under the last bullet point up there, we know that there are dignitary visits, there's political events, there's debates, there's a chamber legislative forum, there's outdoor concert or festival. That, you know, we may support other jurisdictions or even within our own organization. We just provide a, a security detail. So that's when there's more of a general activity that's happening. And, you know, we, we, we would either do it as mutual aid or, you know, provide additional assistance with some of the other law enforcement agencies that are sometimes involved. That sometimes is Secret Service or those kinds of things. So we do have a, the ability to take a look at the event and, and determine how we're going to address it depending on who's organizing the event and whether it's an official political thing versus, you know, an event that would be just organized by a group that, you know, want needs, would like to have our services for traffic control and those kinds of things.
Great. That helps. I appreciate you kind of putting out those distinctions. So thank you.
Jim, Phil Dunshee has asked in the chat box whether or not this has been shared with other groups like the Chamber. What, what kind of communication has occurred other than the fact that I think we have had this before the city council previously?
Well, actually this is somewhat consistent with what we've been doing with the Chamber for years. They have been paying for police services, particularly at Green Days for the, covering the beer garden, those kinds of things. We, 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 at this point in time, intend to still provide some services because that, you know, we're partially a sponsor of that event. We, we are, it's our community-wide event. So we are planning or have and would continue. This doesn't change the, you know, how we've been managing the Chamber. And as we looked at each of these different scenarios, we, we took a look at what we were currently doing. Does it make sense or do we need to do something different? And in most cases, this isn't really going to impact any of the organizations we've already, we're already working with. To give you an example, in the private event on city property, the Rip Ror triathlon and the dog jog, we've, we've already really implemented this. We started from day one. A pro, program like Green Days, it's been going on for many, many years. We're, we're not really suggesting any changes at this point. It's just sort of putting into effect how we manage those events with our staff. So we haven't really suggested any changes. But I think what we're going to do with some of these events is we are going to, the ones that this may create a change, we're going to start working with them and adjusting how we, how we do business with them going forward. But it's not like we're just going to implement this right away. We, we have a working relationship with all these organizations and we will work with them to make sure that we can implement this and, and it be work for both us and them.
You know, there, any other questions or comments for Jim? If not, then I think, based on what you've said, Jim, we can expect to come back as a consent item at some future city council meeting. But in the meantime, if anybody does have any additional comments or questions, they can follow up you, with you directly and, and share those. Correct?
Yes, that, that would be great. Thank you. And just have a couple of other things just to mention real quick, just a reminder to the council members. We do have our strategic planning session, session number two planned for November 12th. That'll begin at four o'clock PM. We are planning and having it at the library. In the, we're going to open up the large room so we can make sure we distance well enough within that facility. We will also serve a meal for, at that event for the council members that are involved and staff. So that'll begin at four o'clock on November 12th. And that's all I have for today.
Okay. Well, we'll take city council members' comments real quick. We do have a closed session yet this evening, so we'll need to get to that as well. So city council comments. Council member ready?
I pass. Don't have anything to add today.
Oh.
Pass.
Martin?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Soroka?
No comments. Thank you.
Evans?
Teresa, can I get a hard copy?
Of what?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Any, anything else, Councilman Evans?
No.
The only thing that I would offer is that tomorrow is Election Day. So if you haven't already voted, which probably most of us have, but if you haven't, please get out and vote tomorrow. It's an important election. So with that, we will move on to the closed session, which is item number 11A per Iowa Code Section 21.51J to discuss the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure reasonably expected to increase the price governmental body would have to pay for that property. The minutes and tape recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved, Evans.
Second, Cope.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed.
You should have all, you should have all received an invitation from me here in the last hour and a half or so for the closed session.
So do we come back to this meeting again?
No.
Okay.
So we will, we will all sign off on this one and go to our emails and join you with the link that's been provided there for the closed session. Correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.